The January 4th, 2022, Bellefonte Area School District Board of Directors Work Session. Everyone, please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Badger. Mr. Bechtel.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mr. Gazar.
Here.
Dr. Perini.
Here.
Ms. Royer.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Steiner.
Here.
Mrs. Weaver.
Here.
Dr. Badger did let us know that he had a project to make today. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening?
Second.
There's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a favor, say nay. Okay. So, our sole item of business this evening is further discussion on how to move forward with the district's logo, mascot, and moniker. We really don't have anything structured in place for this evening. We did have a work session in December. I think that was productive and informative. I think that we're approaching a point with this where everyone on whatever side they may be with it feels as though we need to come to some sort of conclusion, one way or the other, with this. No one wants to see us spending any more of our time on this because it's been going on for a long time. And we certainly have a lot of really pressing and important issues that we need to turn our focus on a lot more than this. So, I think this is one last opportunity for us all to talk about this together with the public, hearing what we have to say about it and trying to figure out what direction that we should take from this point moving on. So, with that, I'll just open up the floor for discussion.
I'll just say that I shared in a Google document two images that I, something that I just saw yesterday. One was another school district's use of the same V that we have. I happened upon this when I was watching television. It was a political commercial for, I think it was someone who's running for Pat Tooney C. I don't remember the name of the gentleman. And he's speaking, I think he's the one from Vermont, and he comes from, I think, Bloomsburg. And I saw a V that looked exactly like ours. And I thought, you know, that's interesting because we did discuss the inability to exclusively use the V because it's a font. However, they did something with it, which I thought was very interesting. And you can see on your Google Doc that it is in the top part of the V that they made it their own. So, they have some, whatever their image is, coming out of the top part of the V. When I looked around at the school district, their football field looks exactly like ours. It has the same V or same logo. So, that was just something that I thought was interesting. And maybe another thing to consider is the crest that we currently have. And I wasn't sure exactly what the images were in the crest. And so, I wanted a close-up view of what is in our crest, just to see if maybe we could utilize any parts of that. So, we have the keystone. We have a book for academics. We have the iron furnace. And we have governor curtain. So, just a place to start, I just thought it would be interesting to look at that just as a point of reference. So, that's just what I wanted to share.
Thank you, Dr.
You're welcome.
I recall it's a crest, and I may be bringing this because I'm getting old. But I think there are, there's some significance to the seven pillars at the top of that.
The governors?
Two. Yes, the top of that crest, if you count, there are seven pillars. There's some significance to that, but I don't remember what it is. It has something to do maybe with the academy. I don't remember. We need Patty Hill here. Or Miss Dinnor.
There's seven virtues.
Might be the seven virtues. Could be the seven virtues. I know it has a significance, I just don't remember what the significance is.
When we get through the branding process, it'd be really good to track down that history from whoever has it and make that part of the guide so people understand what they're looking at. Do you know what year they designed this? I know Stu's will have the evolved and one of the teachers.
I don't. I don't. If I had a better memory, I would, but I don't. I've had lengthy conversations with Patty about it.
I was gonna say, I think Patty is a part of this.
And she can tell you who, when, names every, yes. And I just, and we've had conversations, but I just don't recall. And I think too, now that I'm looking at it, that the star in the center has a significance too. The figure of the center. Like the big compass rose? Yes. This is like a game show. We have fun.
Yeah, I feel like Patty Hill had a big thing on Facebook with the explanation for all of it within the past year. Yeah, I honor thinking the alumni and educators page.
But at some point, we do need to I don't know if it's the word trademark or copyright. That is it.
In the high school handbook, there is a couple paragraphs about the history of the crest.
I don't know.
I can share that if you'd like.
You want to read it?
I can read it. "The school crest was designed in the late 1960s. The Ball Fair Company and Mr. Hugh Manchester, a local historian, were commissioned to design the crest. The symbols were determined by a school-wide, community-based contest. Beginning at the top of the crest, you'll find columns that depict the former Bellefonte Academy, a very prestigious prep school. During the 1930s, the Bellefonte High School was destroyed by fire, yet it continued to operate by holy classes for Bellefonte Academy. The original high school facade also featured the stately column. Continuing clockwise on the crest, you will find a notebook symbolizing knowledge and learning. The lower right-hand corner of the crest is a replication of a statue of Governor Andrew Ray Curtain, which stands on the diamond in Bellefonte. Governor Curtain was born in Bellefonte and was a very important politician during the Civil War. His interest in local education led him to be one of the original members of the Bellefonte Area School Board. He also played a prominent role in founding Penn State University. An iron furnace is depicted in the lower left-hand corner. The entire economy of this area was at one time based on the iron industry. Its inclusion is therefore a tribute to the workers of the area. The upper left-hand corner of the crest houses the Pennsylvania Keystone State Symbol. Surrounding the Keystone Symbol are five stars. Each star represents a Pennsylvania governor who either was born in or lived in Bellefonte. These governors were Curtin Beaver, Hastings, Packer, and Bilger. The star in the middle symbolizes Polaris, the North Star in the constellation Ursa Minor. This star supposedly represents direction and aim in one's education. The crest is currently visible on the high school, on the official high school class rings, district stationary, graduation announcements, and written programs for end-of-the-year activities. The crest is also displayed proudly in the library and in the high school building." So, that's in, if you want to see that for yourself, probably if you get, if you look on the high school website, get on their handbook, I think it's on like page seven. Or actually six.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzgerald.
So, with that as a backdrop, I guess I have a couple of questions. I feel like, and I'm sad that Cena is not here, but I guess we still maybe have, do we have people online watching? So, maybe for everybody's benefit, there's a lot of talk about mascot versus logo, moniker, imagery, crest. Every one of those things is different, but they're being used as a single term and around the controversy that we face. And I wonder if we can't just go through some of them. I'm sure there's agreement on this board and in the community that we don't have a mascot, we don't need a mascot, we don't want a mascot. I could be wrong. But maybe we could go down through some of those and just define what the differences are. And maybe even define what, I believe, Mr. Vernerford, you had some history on when the board voted to not have an Indian head image as our logo, but rather the V that we use now. And let's maybe put some history and backdrop to all.
You want that now, so?
Well, if you need to look it up, I can talk about.
Go ahead.
Okay, so mascot, we're all understanding mascot, we're referring to somebody running around the field or in the stadium or in the basketball court. We don't have a mascot sanctioned by the school. I don't think anybody here thinks that that's appropriate anymore. And we, we're not talking about designing or voting on a mascot. Are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, then the next thing is a logo. We keep talking about our current logo. This is where I lean on, Mr. Vernerford, the board vote, I think it was in 2015 or 2016?
It's July 14th, 2015.
Our district logo is the block V, period. We still have imagery around from the past, but there was a board vote to make the block V our logo. We're back in 2015. And that was accepted by the community because we weren't tearing things up and making things, spending education dollars to try to re-thing. So, there's that. The term moniker has been used quite a bit. I don't know if somebody else wants to explain what they meant when they're using that term. And then imagery itself, in my mind, would include the Indian head image. And then we also have a lot of native imagery around the district, whether it be arrows, feathers, dream catchers, those kind of things. Anybody that was using the term moniker, want to explain what they were referring to by?
Nigga.
So, just nickname?
Yes.
So, moniker is just referring to the name, right?
Yes.
So, many different things, all being kind of used as one term. I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing when we're having discussions.
The presentation that occurred on July 14th, 2015, from the, at the time, Deb Moore and John Clark were co-athletic directors, included an effort, and I'm going to read from their PowerPoint, it says, "In an effort to move towards unity in our athletic programs, the athletic department is narrowing down what can be used representing all of our teams, making them one team." And of those narrowing down was the dream catcher symbol with the V and the block V and the known Native American imagery, the Indian head, so to speak. And at that time, at that meeting, the board had decided that the block V would be the main image and the others would be secondary images. It doesn't necessarily say that they're going to be completely faded out, but they really said that the block V is mine to represent our one team. It was all about coming up with an image that was for one team. That's where that came from. That's, was back on July 14th, 2015. And that was a vote or that was a presentation that the board? It's hard to tell. I mean, it's hard to tell what was happening that night because they voted on uniforms and all kinds of things.
I don't remember voting on that. I remember, I vaguely remember the, I remember the presentation and I remember them talking about it. John, I think you were there too. But I don't remember an actual vote. I think that they decided this and we were like, okay, that sounds.
That's, that was what I thought my understanding was prior to this. But I don't. Not that I'm, I mean, not that I think there's much difference because if the board had an objection at that time to that, they would have voiced it.
Right, so to me, it's no different.
I'm just curious.
What it was, but I don't remember an actual vote, but that doesn't mean that we didn't.
Right.
And that's been so long ago, so.
Their push that night was for branding. And whatever we chose to do, that we trademarked it and copyrighted it so that we could have. They did not include any discussion that I can find on the crest. It was coming from the athletic department because it was athletics. And the premise was, they were trying to, as I said, use certain symbols to make the athletic department be one team. So, that all of the athletic teams were using the block V or all the athletic teams were using, at that time, the dream catcher. But the discussion that night was though that the block V would be the primary symbol of the one team. That was my.
And so, in our discussion here about the crest and possible logo like the V that you had shown, I'm kind of getting the feel that the crest is used almost exclusively for educational materials and the image or logo is for all things athletics.
For the most part, there's some overlap. I mean, you walk into the high school and you see the crest, but you can also see in the past, the Native American head. So, you know, around the, as far as is how it's majorly used, yes, absolutely. But it's not to say that you couldn't see the crest at a football game or you couldn't see the, you know, on the band uniforms or something. It's not that you don't see it someplace or another, but for the most part, absolutely. That mascot piece is more or less for the athletics and the crest has been the letterhead and the academic piece.
Or the logo, so if we don't use the word mascot anymore.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, does anyone other than a sports team use an image? Because we keep saying athletics.
As far as these images off the table?
Like even the V or did any other organization other than the athletics, you use the Indian head? Was it anywhere, it was on the band, I mean, the band used it, but like, no drama group. So, are we exclusively talking about athletics? And how this impacts athletics?
I see it as two things. So, if we're, I'm hopeful that we can go through a branding process and get trademarked images that are appropriate, copyrighted, anything that we can. And to me, both the crest and whatever imagery or anything else that's decided on, all the way down to actual colors and design features of different uniforms, so that it's all laid out. I'm trying to find the sample that we had before. If I can find it, I'll have Mr. Funk put it up on the board there.
Again, it's like, let me give you an example. So, we have, I'm just making, a group of middle school teachers, let's use the middle school teachers, and they all bought matching T-shirts. They all have the Indian head on. And it was just a matter of, they just did. Like, it wasn't athletically inclined and it wasn't academically inclined, it was just the T-shirts they got at the time. It was the school's picture at the time.
The botchy team?
Well, the botchy team, but they're an athletic team, you know?
There could be clubs too that have used it and we, you know, we may not know about it. There's probably lots of things that we don't know.
That's why I'm hesitant to say that's exclusively athletic with athletics, because it is other places.
Mrs. Vernerford, on July 14th, there was no vote.
There was no vote, yeah, in the minutes.
So, I think that's kind of the spark is, although it was unofficial, that that was no longer the image. When we made it official, I think that seemed to spark, for lack of a better word, the controversy.
It was secondary. It was a secondary.
It was a secondary.
So, then it goes from secondary image to where that moves on. And then we don't want to, and that's continuing those images.
Because it had been fading, for lack of better word, over the years since it was first approached in the 90s. Would you agree with that? Or am I just making that up? Or is that just the way I saw it?
I don't know. It's me, when you get to the year before 2003, I wasn't here. So, it's hard for me to, and it's also hard for me to remember conversations and how. I do remember the conversation that evening though was somewhat likely, I thought, about using the V as the primary, the others as the secondary, but I'm shaking my head. I vaguely remember it all. I was sitting back there then, probably not paying attention. What year, I'll be honest.
It was March of 15th, but Donna and I were on. I mean, I don't remember a whole lot of controversy coming up with it. I remember just the athletic department presenting that this was what they wanted to use to show that they wanted it to be united. I don't, I don't remember.
And was that when they got rid of black also as a third color? Because I do remember that.
Black was before that. That night, what they were talking about at the time, a lot of college teams are in that timeframe. A lot of college teams were, football teams were going to gray instead of having red and white uniforms, they would have red and gray uniforms. And so, there was a, there was a discussion about getting new uniforms and using the color gray. And in that discussion, then we went back to the whole black thing, when we got rid of the black color in that. So, black happened prior to that discussion, but gray came up with that discussion. I wish I had.
Mr. Funk, I sent that, mailed it to God if you could.
But I do agree, I don't remember that much controversy that, I really don't.
I think because it came from, it came from the teams and the students and the department admin, yeah.
And the idea was, they were trying to unite the teams because we had, you know, some teams that were using just feathers. I don't remember what the circumstances were.
We had a lot of teams and or groups making up their own. And we were also trying to get people back on track to use what was only approved by the school board.
There we go, Ken's older than I am, so he has better memory too.
So, district.
I do think in some of the history that I read, it was characterized as being more respectful. That some of the switch and some of the change evolving to something that was more respectful. And that was, I think, written in one of the history pieces that I said about the evolution of that. I mean, I, you know, wasn't, I don't know if that language was used at the time, but certainly it had been used to describe that, that kind of shift. Or as we've talked about previously, sort of a evolution, evolving nature from what had been previously more deeply in the Native American thematic.
More appropriate, or what was the term, historically accurate?
And respectful, respectful is what I distinctly remember and I can, you know, go back to where that history was. And that's where I, and that's where I get stuck somewhat in saying at that time, if we were thinking of moving in this direction and moving away from the Indian head imagery, to be more respectful, that that in and of itself, in my mind, was saying we were kind of acknowledging that maybe while hidden tradition might need to change or should change in the times. And that, and back then, you know, six, seven years ago, how many years ago is this time?
Would that coincide with the removal of imagery in colleges of Pennsylvania? I'm trying to think of IUP and.
That was a lot earlier.
That was, ship was, yeah, ship was earlier too.
How about, was Juniata changed? I was, I'm just trying to think of that. If all the removal of all Native American mascots in collegiate in Pennsylvania coincided with that? Because like you said, was it a deliberate thing on the board's behalf?
Maybe not the board, but perhaps athletics, I don't know. It might not have been described as such at the time, but it was characterized later as that, you know, I mean, certainly unity. I think you could say that that is something that might be more unified in the past.
I think there was a national discussion, the 2013, 14, 15 era because of the Washington Redskins and the whole national discussion. So, that might have precipitated the discussion here as well.
What are the athletic teams all using now with their uniforms? It seems as though they've all gone to the B. It seems as though they've all gone to the B. And just the word Raider.
As far as I know, I know we were trying to get a handle on where we have the imagery of things, that Devon had said that a majority of the teams had, did not have the Indian head logo on their uniforms. I assume that to be then they have a B, or they just have Raiders, or have Red Raiders, or something to that at that time. I could be wrong, but.
Football team have the Dreamcatcher.
They had those on their helmets, I believe. They got the uniforms last year, two years ago.
And do they just say Raider?
Yes, I think they do say this.
So nothing still says red?
I don't, again, I can't be exclusive and say absolutely, but I do know that, I think there were, they hand the uniforms down, or they share them down, and for some reason, I think there was a junior high track team or a junior high somebody that might have the Indian head still on.
I don't know. Across country, I wonder.
Could be that.
Having been a volunteer coach, I should have remembered that.
So as the process evolves, and as it was mentioned in 2015, when they made that decision or had that discussion, the sample branding guidance on the big screen there, I think is what we're all talking about trying to get to. So we don't have individual teams trying to design their own things with their own parameters. This sets everything. I don't know if you might want to scroll through that, Mr. Funk, and show us the samples. Approved marks, approved colors, right down to the federal color number, size, placement. So they're welcome to go out and get any kind of uniform, cups, hats, whatever they want, but they have to, has to be compliant with this official branding guide.
Oh, cute kid.
Different marks for different grade levels.
So who would they have employed to do this service?
Well, I can tell you, and he volunteered to help us.
Because maybe that would be our next step.
And see, I'm hoping that we can get back to a branding committee and move the process forward in a much more measured fashion, so that we can participate with, maybe as a sketch artist or someone who is very familiar with a branding guide and can help us through that process, getting more input from, unrestricted input from community, staff, students, and move it forward, obviously.
But adding the two pieces together, rather than just the local committee or a professional putting the two together.
Well, I think it probably at this point just needs to be a board committee, so we can, we can keep it moving. We can meet outside of regular board meetings without a forum and just keep the process moving on a little bit more of a fast track. Because trying to wait every two weeks to have a public meeting makes it really difficult trying to meet as a committee as a whole.
I also wouldn't envision this one being time, time, as you said, measured, thoughtful, unpressured way of proceeding through this process. I also would envision this branding guide as also being a way to memorialize some of these things we've talked about in terms of the uses of these. So if we had the B as our primary logo, then it would say, this is the primary logo, it would say currently, Bellefonte is not, has no mascot, no use of mascot. Those kinds of things could be memorialized in this document. It could be a living document moving forward, and the people could work from as things evolve or change or other decisions were made. It's something that's going to be carved in stone necessarily.
So this guy here, Brian, he's a, he's actually an art teacher in Cambria County. He is a freelance illustrator and graphic designer with 20 years' experience, has clients such as Scholastic, McGraw-Hill, Penguin Publishing Houses, and more. He designed the sheets, truck logos that you see going down the road. And of the different samples that we had before, when we were trying to move this process along, this was one of the best ones that I saw that I liked. And I had asked him if we could share this at a public board meeting, you know, even though it was really his material. He said, feel free to do that, and he'd be happy to work with us if we get to that point.
Are we dancing around the issue that we don't want to talk about, though?
Well, in my mind, I think we need to talk about where we need to go, instead of arguing or debating an actual image. I don't, I think we saw what happens when nine or 10 people sit in here and debate what is right or wrong for the district and then make a decision. The democratic process takes care of that and realigns it with the community. I think we need to get back to the branding process and move it along in a measured way and have some real samples and some real professional help along the way that we can bring back. And then, as I say, when you're meeting as a committee without a forum, you can meet a lot and do a lot of things and make great progress in a two-week period, and then give a presentation to the whole board in public. That's how I kind of envision it going forward, if we can.
Have a back and forth of committee work and bring in a public meeting, feedback, input, go back to committee. Just take our time, work through it, yes.
And I think we mentioned, like, we don't want every future board to go through this same process. So, not that I want it to take two years, but we have two years to get this right. Be slow enough and purposeful enough, transparent enough, to bring the community along with us, so that we're not back here in two years with the same thing again.
But the board should also decide what we all agree on as far as what we are expecting from this image. So for example, in talking to unofficially to some of the people on the committee, I know they debated, do we want an image that is historically related to Bellefonte's history? Not necessarily our tradition, because that, like the Native American, that's our tradition. But that's not our history. So does, does our image have to be historically, is that what we're asking for it? So, like, we should give a parameter, something that we all agree on, in my opinion.
We spent a lengthy amount of time.
Oh, you're on the committee. So you know what I'm talking about.
We spent a lengthy amount of time. I mean, that was one of the questions, a discussion question with the group one night to try to get discussion started, was what role does history play in what we do? And that was as much about the crest too, as, you know, what role does, what role should history play in our, in trademarking our history? I don't think we came to any answers to that question.
But it seemed like they all did. At the end, the four images seem like they did.
Well, and that was part of the presentation I did all, I mean, we talked about historical significance, so we have to sound, sound that's true.
I would just caution you, there are too many guidelines or restrictions, other than obvious things, like it can't be obscene, it can't be disrespectful. I think those are just kind of a given. But I think one of the problems that the committee had last time was the parameters were so narrow, that then they were just really, they were trying hard, they put a lot of hours in trying to stay within those parameters, when really, the majority of them didn't want to be within those parameters. They had a lot of great ideas outside of those parameters. And I would just kind of like to see it, let's just open it back up and see what the community and committee can come up with. Instead of restricting them right off the bat, I don't think they're going to bring anything appropriate, and who defines what appropriate is, you know, that's kind of a pretty broad term. Just my thought.
Dr. Prini, again, you've been through this, and I'm throwing you on the spot again. But you're the experienced one.
I don't know what experience it is at all, other than all this here. Are there things, the question that keeps coming up in my mind, are there things that should be on the table or off the table? If you give this to a logo artist, to a graphic artist, to design, is there anything that should be not part of consideration? Not to narrow it too much, just is there anything that we can, that we can specifically say, no, we don't want the crest as a parameter, or whatever, just use that as an example.
So yes, is that something that we should all agree on? What are those parameters? Because Tammy, you said that you felt, the committee felt that the rules were too narrow. I thought they were too, I got the impression that they were too broad, that they didn't even know where to start. What seemed to be handcuffing everybody?
The handcuffing came with the word Raiders and the image, because if you read that, that motion, we've read it a thousand times. If you read the motion, the discrepancy comes between using the word Raiders, because the motion either implies or indicates that we needed something to represent Raiders. And so when you say, okay, we'll keep the Raiders, I'm not saying we shouldn't, there are only so many things that would represent a Raider in our minds. And that's where we felt, and I'm speaking to the committee, Dr. Bank is shaking his head too.
I would agree with that.
That linking of the word Raiders and saying in the motion that it had to be something that represents Raiders made it difficult. And, you know, so we were stretching, and we were supposed to come up with three ideas of how those images, or whatever they might be, would represent a Raider of something, without doing the ethnicity, all of those things.
Using people.
Using people, basically speaking.
If I could, if it's that hard and strenuous to try to come up with something, you don't need to force, you know. Like, if we're agreeing that the Block B is functional for now, we don't have to just try to force and figure out what it's going to be, you know?
I agree with that.
And just move on with copyrighting the crest, because as I showed you, that B is used by other people.
I should say though, that, let me say, I agree with that with the name Raiders. I do have, I mean, I know with the last meeting, you talked, you know, about compromising those kinds of things. I think it would be more difficult for me, because of the history and the context, for Red Raider and the Block B to continue, because in the absence of a different depiction, that I think would be, would leave a lot of room for, for the Native American imagery to kind of return. Not necessarily maybe sanctioned by the school, but otherwise, you know, otherwise. I just think that the, I can see the Block B and Raider working, and a lot of teams have worked with that over, you know, I bought Raider gear this past fall from other teams and youth club clubs and all of that, so.
That was also the limitation of the committee, because the motion said that we were supposed to come up with three images that represents Raiders. And we had many committee members who just wanted to keep the Block B, and that was one of the things on the table, but the motion said that we had to come up with three images. And, and the Block B wasn't going to go away, so they were afraid if we put the Block B in that, or tried to do that. And then the board said, okay, we want this, X, whatever, the knight or whatever it was. Then the Block B would go away, and they didn't want the Block B to go away. So we were, it was a dilemma. And, and the night of that, they're like, we're keeping the Block B, and I said, yes, we'll keep the Block B. And so that's why the Block B wasn't part of that, but the motion said that the Block, that we had to come up with these images to represent Raiders, and the Block B doesn't necessarily represent a Raider.
See, I think the other thing we're maybe losing sight of, or maybe, I'm sorry, maybe losing sight of here, is that all those things get flushed out then as a committee of the whole, a regular board meeting in public. So it's, again, my preference would be not to hold back or tie the branding committee to any guidelines. Let them come up with whatever the community decides, whatever the committee decides. Obviously, they're going to have several layers of whittling things down and put their best foot forward. It could come before the board, then the board could say, oh, start over. You know, we don't like these, and here's why, and then it starts over. But if we go through that process, you know, whether it takes two months or two years, I think we're going to get everything that people want to have seen out in the open for discussion and an up or down vote, or a recommendation, or whatever, however that turns out. But just because there's no restrictions on the branding committee doesn't mean that you're losing your voice or your say in the final product. Because nothing can happen on the committee, as an ad hoc committee, they won't make any decisions other than bring recommendations, and then the decisions will be made here in public at the board.
And this is a better way to get to true consensus, right? True consensus versus kind of just hammering it through and, you know, so, yes.
So if I understand what you're saying correctly, you would, you would give the project to the graphic artist and say, you know, come up with some images and bring them back to us and see how they, by understanding.
Well, I think part of what he's saying is not just for an image, but all the different iteration, the B of for use in the B, and the colors, and those kinds of things. Is it just specifically driven toward the, toward the design of a new image? It's all the branding of, like you're saying, the colors and, and how it looks for the elementary schools. Maybe they have a different B kind of thing going on, those types of things there.
Yeah, and I also think that, I'm not sure that you even jumped that forward right off the bat. I think that if a committee is formed, and that committee meets, decides what help they want to bring in from outside, and then you start with some history, so they have a full understanding of what we already know, if it's someone from outside. Like, you can't just, we can't say, well, here's what we want, draw us a picture of it, because we don't know where it's going to go yet. So we give that person some history of our board meetings, of the controversy, of the history of the mascot and logo and imagery, and then have some discussions about where we've been trying to go. And then, do you have any artistic renditions of these maybe different areas, and see what they could come up with? But I think it's a bigger process to get everybody's voice heard, and hopefully, again, have something that everybody, whether they are all on board, whether they can at least understand and accept and get behind. So it's not a, I don't see, I would like to bring outside help in far before we get to where we have a decision made, if this is what we want, now let's have someone design it. Does that make sense?
Another example is the crest we're looking at up here. Like, they have four different versions of the crest. Our crest, potentially, they could freshen it up, you know, it's a great crest, you know, how about if we had a black in there, you know what I mean? And so, for different uses and things like that, that would be another focus.
Can I also ask, are we saying that our discussion of the mascot is now off the table, or stays on the table, or the mascot itself is that person is present at the games? Do we continue to discuss a mascot, or can we say?
The district hasn't had a mascot quite some time. I think everyone, as John said, is that it's generally something that people just aren't doing to a great extent. I think every, if there's a consensus on anything, that's probably the one thing we have consensus.
That's a great question.
And as far as, like, if you're talking about district business, or when do we talk about it? Again, I think it's just as the, as the branding committee feels they have enough information to present it's meaningful, then to give an update, rather than saying, we need an update every meeting, or something, just. Or sometimes, what I've done in the past in creating a committee, I'll ask for a committee update at least once a month or something like that, just to get a feel for us checking on the committee to make sure things are happening, and, you know. But not to open up, like, a huge discussion and have the same debates we've had. We need the community to understand that we're working on it by giving regular updates and making progress. Hopefully, we can move past that kind of thing and get everybody engaged with the solution, rather than digging into a corner.
And again, if it was memorialized in this document, the district does not have or utilize any kind of a mascot. That way, if anything cramped up, people would just say, refer to the branding guide. And we know that, that it would be documented moving forward. No ifs, ands, or buts about it, no, you know.
And that would protect our industry from others.
I also think for the committee that you're talking about, to be really efficient and effective, I think it's going to be really important to get the professional artist, whoever that is, involved to kind of lead and direct that committee right from the, right from the very beginning. Because I feel like, you know, with the committee that we had, it was, I don't know, it was hard. We didn't really have that professional, we didn't have that professional background to necessarily lead that. And we almost need somebody who's gone through. And we almost need somebody who's, who's gone through this, it's what they do, to come in and lead us down that path.
And it was actually the committee who suggested that at one point. They're like, you guys are helping, and we asked, but they were, I mean, it was a great, you know, and I keep saying this, but I don't like, there have been some people on that committee that have been in the lines because they were on that committee. And they, they were a fantastic group of people that worked really hard to come to consensus. They worked really hard when they were very much on either side of whatever it might be to just work together and hear each other and listen to each other. And, uh, but yeah, they, at times they felt like, you know, they just, they kind of were like, just tell us what we need to be doing or how we need to.
I just think we're going to be spinning, spinning our tires if we don't have that person right away kind of showing us what we need to do or directing those conversations.
And, and asking us the questions we should be asking, because we don't even know what we should be asking. So we can't provide an answer to a question we don't know.
And that was the genesis of my question to you, is how much, how is this going to operationalize over, over time? Who will, who would be the lead person at this? And would we leave it to the artist? And to a certain degree, I think that would be a second question.
Well, so I think from a protocol standpoint, the committee chair would lead. However, the committee chair can appoint someone else to, to lead the meetings or, you know, is that, I think once the committee is formed and, and they meet, then they can decide, you know, how do we, who we want to bring in? When do we want to bring them in? How do we want the, you know, so, yes.
Advisor.
Yeah, and whatever, I mean, even the chair of that, the chair of the committee can make someone, you know, have a co-chair of people as well, whatever. Just direct that person, you lead the meetings and help us along and then as the chair of the committee, we report back to the board, kind of thing, so.
I'd like to double back though on what Ms. Berniford had mentioned about the rebranding commission. I mean, by all report, good people who did that good faith, good conscience, people from both sides. And they're to be commended and thanked, they did their level best. If the B wants, I think the board did not set them up for success. And I, I'd like to thank them for their service. And if anyone has any questions or any criticisms, I think it should be directed at us in that regard, so.
So do you have someone, John, to reach out to?
Do I, do I have one?
Do you have a name to reach out to?
Uh, well, if we're going to talk to this fellow here.
Okay, so yes.
And then what, does he submit a proposal like for like how much it might be?
Yeah, we would, we would have to.
Right?
Yeah, and we, we couldn't do that without board approval of some dollars and Mr. Bean's approval of, hey, I'm not so sure I want to be sitting here actually. Don't bring any clothes with you. Yeah, so we'd have to talk about, you know, what kind of involvement and what commitment financially that would be and approve that at the board.
Do you have a sense of how large of a committee you might like to, to see? Like how much, I mean, I know, I know, you know, Mrs. Berniford had opened up to everybody, which is great, but it does, when you have 50 people, that is hard to get things done. So I just didn't know if you have more of an idea or, or.
So I, I would say, first of all, it's not, it's not in my purview.
Right, but I mean.
It would be Mr. Steiner, whatever.
Yeah, leadership, leadership.
But I, but I think that a, a committee of probably three, maybe four, but at least three board members and a few staff would form the core committee. And then that committee, through their discussions, because it's a lot easier to meet when you have fewer people, then that committee then would, hey, we need to pull in this group. So then for a couple of their meetings, I might pull in, just for argument's sake, let's say the student body. And get some input, okay, and then, and then they're done and then they might go to another group and get input and then, you know, so I, I can't say that I want 30 people sitting around that are all named individuals on the committee, because it's really hard to get anything done. But I, I think you have the flexibility to, to bring people in and get help as you need it. And some of that you won't know until a recommendations or a progress report is made to the board and someone might suggest, hey, you missed this group or what about input from here? They can go back and solicit help from that group as well.
Can I suggest perhaps a part of the discussion at some point goes back to the memorialization of, of some of the images as well. The, the images themselves carry a lot of memories and a lot of feelings. And if there was a way to memorialize those kinds of things, that, that might ease. You know, I know we did that and that helped a bit. It didn't, it didn't heal everything, but it helped a bit. So just, you know, having pictures of people from 20, 30, 40 years ago in some prominent display place that, oh yes, may have some of the, the older images in them. Just, just kind of helps me, so maybe that can be a backdoor type of thing that we just keep in mind.
I, I just would have to agree with that just from the standpoint of staff and things, you know. When the board made the decision that they did, then we had staff members saying, am I going to get fired on wearing an Indian hat? And so there was, there was like, people were afraid. And, and I'm going to be honest, I went to a football game and realized there was an Indian in my sweatshirt, so I stood like this for the whole. But yes, you know, if it, if it isn't such a taboo subject, I think that's a lot to be said for that.
And I think for me, I always think in terms of moving forward. This is what we do now, moving forward, not necessarily going back to erase everything that's in the past. So to me, that's, that's a distinction. I think, okay, well, when so and so, when my kids graduated, they were red raiders with the Indian head. But now moving forward, my grandchildren will not be. It's just a mind shift for me personally.
I think that is one of the things that caused a lot of controversy over the last two motions with removing, it wasn't real clear about leaving artwork or having, memorializing anything, it was remove, 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 remove. So I think that probably added to the level of frustration that we saw in the community and student body.
I, well, I think at the time, I think there were, I mean, I know we had talked about, pretty something like what you had talked about as well, you know, in the meeting. I don't think it was ever about a racing or taking our way, but that's something in our minds that's, have already been, been there and that's not necessarily moving forward.
Yeah, it's just not in the text of the motion, that's, so.
Sure.
Then it leaves so many things up for interpretation and people draw their own conclusions and.
But I think that was the nature of the beast, just like Dr. Karidi said, that the metaphor, ripping the Band-Aid off, we did that. And then it was ouch for a while and we didn't know what it was that we were dealing with. But I feel now a lot better, me personally, with coming to some terms of how now we reel this in. Now that the Band-Aid has been ripped off and we can settle and move on in a systematic, less, I don't know, more sensitive way maybe.
No. Can I say one more thing? I think there's some things that we haven't settled. That discussion at the last meeting about raiders and red raiders, we haven't settled that. And I, I think perhaps the process will help us find this. Not an elimination of one or an elimination of another, but it will help us to settle on that. So even though it would be nice tonight to say, this is what we're going to, this is what we're going to do. Maybe we allow the process itself to reveal.
Take, dictate.
How we move forward, so, so we can be, you know, I want everybody happy. It's not possible in this life, but I want everybody to be happy and to the, to our best extent. Help everybody to come, not kumbaya, just to be, to be okay with whatever we decide. And so, and again, keeping our focus, not necessarily what's the right decision for us, but we make decisions on behalf of what's in the best interest of students. Students now who are starting school, you know, in 2022 and forward. What's in the best interest of students, of course, always with the mind of the taxpayers, because we are all those as well. But that's what I try to keep in my mind too, and that's at the forefront for me personally.
The reality is, uh, there really isn't much compromise that needs to be done in this perspective. There's a lot we just talked about that most of us pretty much agree on relative to the mascot, even some of the imagery stuff. But the name, there's no compromise, right? It's binding, right? Because people either want to keep red raider or people want to change raider. And whichever one there is, you're going to have people who are upset and unhappy because that isn't what that is. So, you know, there's no compromise to be had.
But again, I think to Dr. Karidi's point, I think that that gets flushed out in the committee. You know, maybe, maybe the committee comes up with something that has nothing to do with either of those, I don't know. And then they get, they get accepted or rejected at the board level. But I think, so I, I think right now, so that we're not functioning in a way that is contradicting existing board resolutions or votes. I honestly think that both of those prior motions need to be rescinded, you reset the process, you begin the branding without restrictions and you see where the process takes you. It could be that they come back with a block B and we're, we don't have either red or raider. It could be that they come back with a, a Native American Indian head image and we just say no, like it's, but you see my point, let the community and the process unfold. See where it takes us, then you, then you've got a good pulse on where they want to be. You have a final say, nothing's going to get around this team sitting in this boardroom right now. All decisions will be made here in public. So rather than restrict the process, open the process up and see where it goes, see what people are thinking. I, I really highly doubt that whoever's on that committee is going to bring a recommendation to the board that's flat out inappropriate. But the, the two motions that are there now are, you're going to end up with the same conundrum that they had at the last attempt, where to try to operate within those guidelines is so restrictive that you're just going to be trying to pull straws and make stuff up just to try to move the process along. I don't think that's fair to the process. With that, and I don't know how anybody else feels about that, just be my recommendation if I were involved in it. And I think recommendations could also come from the committee about memorializing. What do we do about artwork versus imagery? What do we do about all those things that should all be flushed out through this process?
Basically, you're saying start with the clean slate, in a sense.
Well, in a sense, I'm, I'm envisioning sort of a reset to get back where we were before this was, I don't know if a better word, before it was forced onto the agenda that it was not really district business, things were making progress.
Right.
And I think that we reset it back to that, we open it up, we get, then we pull the good ideas that came out of this, whatever, last year and a half that we've been having this discussion. We reengage with a branding process, we get outside help, we, we pull the community, we really open it up to bring ideas in and see what people think and want. And then you filter that through the committee and get rid of things that are inappropriate or make no sense, you know? And bring some recommendations to the board. The board could say, hey, they like four of these, let's find a way to whittle down four of them. The board may say, no, we don't like any of these, but the final say is with this board. And like I say, we have two years, I don't want it to take that long, but to get everybody's input so that people aren't feeling like they're being told what to think or say or how to feel. We've got to get it out and let them be part of the process.
That's, that sounds fair.
I, I don't know about rescinding the motions. I don't know if there's, I mean, because in my mind, that that is then taking a step backwards to perhaps go forward. I don't know if there is a way that that committee as charged could have it opened up to make a recommendation for the board to then rescind and accept this image. You know what I mean? Like to, to say, rather than rescind now and say, go forth and do, do whatever, the committee could say, we recommend that you rescind and here's what we recommend you replace it with. So that it's, it's, it's right there all in one, one action, you know, step. You know, i- i- it, you know, I think, yeah, that, that's the way that I would see it, um, a- as making sense. So you know what's being decided. And perhaps that is to say, you know, that, that committee comes forth and says, hey, we have this image and we want to use this image with red raider and this is our branding for it. Or will you adopt this? And that's the way I would like to see it, is we move forward with it.
I agree, I would rather do it that way than rescind the motions. I would rather rescind the motions. Flat out.
Was there a time limit on the, when this had to be accomplished?
Yes.
On the motions?
On the motions, everything was standing up.
The clock's ticking on the imagery, that's in here clearly. The time limit on the first motion was, I mean, that, that is required within that motion.
So the first part of the motion was we had to have this committee and we would come up with these ideas by the first four million of them.
So is that one part of that resolution, motion that we, have we not fulfilled yet? Because all the easy stuff has been removed.
That's correct, but the large stuff is not.
But we did say that in the motion, it said with the exception of the things that are costly, it's not on there at all.
So what it said was, everything was to be removed within one year. Unless it needed maintenance prior to that, then it would be removed during that maintenance. So basically one year or less.
So there wasn't anything about, I think it was costly on there, is that just in my own mind? I think it was something we discussed, but it was never, but it was not officially on there.
And it was done without appropriations, which is a little embarrassing. You know, we're not supposed to be making decisions like that without understanding the financial impact to the taxpayers. So I think that, and I don't like, you know, I, I believe in supporting the majority decision and moving forward. But nobody's perfect, sometimes we do things that maybe weren't well thought out and a correction needs to be made, and I think that's where we're at. I think the community told us that's where we're at. And I think that's another, I see it as a mitigating factor to try to bring some peace and, and apply it to the process and let us move forward in a measured way rather than, than leaving it in place. I think it would go a long way towards calming the waters so that we can get good participation moving forward.
I would say with the employment, I'd say with employment, you know, I mean, one side of them very happy, but how would we claim? When, you know, is there another way to say, hey, we'll put everything on the table and we'll vote it, vote it all together so we know what you're, you're voting on, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, maybe if it comes down to the committee and that's what they decide, then that's what they decide. But as I say, ultimately the decision still rests solely with the board, not, not anyone else, so.
But I'm saying a board, a board rescinding those votes, I don't know that would calm the waters. It might calm the waters on one side of that, but it certainly would be taken as another, another way from, by, by those that, that might have been supportive of, of that.
So I don't want, I, I don't want them to feel like it's a conversation between you and I, but I would just suggest to that is, then where do we put, where do we start appropriating funds then to, to carry out those motions if they stay? You see what I mean? You see what I mean? Those motions have a timeline and invoke some responsibilities and action by the board that we either need to take. Or we need to pause or rescind or do something, but.
Or extend, yeah, whatever.
They're, they're sitting out there, yeah, something needs to happen with those because.
That I can see, I could see extending it, you know.
Can we see that motion? Can we look at it again? Because I'm searching, you know, I'm.
The gym floor alone, we would have to start acting on very soon. To get it scheduled.
Right.
For the summer, so we need to start bringing people in, the estimates we got are long expired, we'd have to bring people in again. Get beds, and I'd have to work them into the coming years budget, so that needs to happen sooner than later, if that's still gonna stay.
April thirteenth and April twenty seventh, four weeks. Did you have anything scheduled for the gym floor coming up? So.
Just normal maintenance, not a deep.
But not the.
That's not scheduled yet, no.
So we can leave the gym floor for now, anyway.
And the gym floor proposes another problem because it has both the Red Raiders on the end lines and it has the Indian head in the middle, so.
It's also Red Raiders and the auxiliary gym on the floor.
Correct.
Oh, wow. That's just used as practice, correct?
And there's also Red Raiders painted on the walls.
And the two stones are the biggest concern.
It's April thirteenth.
I, I do remember, I, I remember discussion being at this, at this. With this, saying if there were things that would.
If you go to the minutes.
No, just, no, the motion, bring that up.
The motion. They changed it.
No, that's it.
That's it.
I changed it right there.
In there, okay, thank you.
But I was gonna say, I do remember the discussion being if Mr. Bean was to come back with something or there were things that. We're not gonna be able to meet this timeline, that we can bring those back to the board and address those at that time, so that's the way I would.
So really, the first sentence can still stand.
I, so what image are we talking about there?
The current Native American image.
We have an Indian head, we have dream catchers, we have arrows, we have.
Spears, feathers.
Spears, feathers, tomahawks.
Well, it just, if there was an S on the end of image, then. But there's not.
If there was a hundred and fifty grand attached to it, that might help too, but there is a.
Okay, the officially retired and then the replacement, the time, I'm just suggesting to get rid of the part that seems to be. Is putting the pressure on everybody right now, keeping the original, we're going to move forward, what it's going to look like is yet to be determined. Can I? So. We either wanna bring the community along with us or we don't. Um, because, like. Not trying to say anything to ruffle feathers, but they're not along with the people who are on this board. Prior to Jack and I joining, or Jack and I would not be sitting here. If you want to bring the community along, if you want this to not. Divide us or the student body anymore, because I don't know if you guys talk to kids in high school, but my daughter will tell you. It is not pleasant there. In regards to this image issue, um, across the board. Then, in my opinion, the best way to move forward. Is to rescind both motions and allow an expert with the committee. To do exactly what Mr. Gazzar has stated, because at least then. The community and the students aren't gonna feel like things are being jammed down their throat. Because for the last eighteen months, being not on this board, it has been nothing but that. From the community members. To the students, and that's exactly how it felt, um, not being a part of any of this. And I think that's a really horrible way for us to present things to our community, the people who pay our taxes, who support our students, who support the school. That's a really, really just awful feeling to be on the other side of that.
What's happened to the imagery that's been removed? Where, where is it? Is it like in a closet somewhere?
With Joe Patern, it's with Joe. I'm joking, it's not with Joe Paterno. Um, as far as being removed, uh. For example, we, there was a, it was also, um, consideration, for example, the carving of the. The Indian that we had in the entranceway of the high school, um, there, when the board voted to remove that, there were some people that wanted that as a souvenir in their homes. So for its own safety, uh, it, it was locked in, in a closet for that big image. Uh, other things have just simply been replaced by block B, you know, a t-shirt or a uniform.
Yeah, but the actual. Physical, you know, hold it in your hand type of imagery that. You know, was in display in. The hallways and classrooms and things like that, what has happened to?
Trophies, trophies and all those things are still there on display. The scoreboard panels.
They're still there.
They're still there, so there are things that haven't been, the things that were, that cost money were the ones that, that, um. Have, have still remained where they're at.
My understanding, the things that have been removed were, uh, anything like in a classroom that was just a piece of paper on a bulletin board. Either those kind of things that could just be taken down at the end of the year, that's the kind of stuff that was removed.
Native American, that each, one year, the teachers each got a, a magnet that's the Indian head. Um, as a, a staff appreciation gift, the teachers just kept them, kept them home.
They have them on their refrigerator hanging up, other pictures and doctor appointments. But because it's been phased out for over the years, most of that stuff, I guess, is gone, has been phased out anyway.
There's a, a Native American bust that's in the showcase as you walk in the high school, it was a gift from the class of. Yeah, I don't remember, it's a later plus, like class in the nineties, it's a huge bust of, of Native American, it's still there.
There are a lot of pieces to the puzzle, I think that's one of the things that.
I was wondering if like, if there was like. Like. A bust that was like prominently in the lobby and is no longer there, you know, what had happened to that, you know what I mean? Right now, you know, in our neighboring community, they're still trying to figure out where Joe Paterno statue is. And nobody's talking, and it's just about like, um. One of the great mysteries of the area and. I was just wondering if we had that similar situation here.
And I think there's a lot of rumor here as well, because there are. I, I'm sure that you have gotten phone calls or emails, my kid says this is no longer there, or. So and so said the floor is being redone, or, you know, the ceiling tile is missing. You know, so there, there is, in the community, people wanna know, pe- people, this hasn't gone away.
Mrs. Parnes, can you put all mysteries to rest in season, and how you count out everything that's been removed?
Uh, no, I can't do that, but, and you, you, that's kind of funny, it was, I got a, a phone call from, I, I don't know, maybe it was one of you guys, I forget who called me. Somebody called me and said, uh, can you please quell the rumor that the gym floor is being done right now? I said, I am looking at the gym floor right now, it is not being touched by anybody, there's actually a couple of kids playing basketball on it, but. So, you know, keep, at every meeting, whenever, when I was asked what's been removed, I've said. And I've been very upfront about what's still there, what's art and, you know, ceiling tiles are all still there. I try to stay ahead of that, but you know, people will make up rumors and things.
Well, and all it takes is one person going into the school who thought something was somewhere. But it wasn't there, maybe it was never there, maybe it was there twenty years ago. And it's been removed because I don't know, it was old, it broke, whatever. But that, that continues, you know, to flood our community with. No feelings.
I think as long as those two motions are, are in existence.
Because they're, yes, because they think that you guys, you guys, I'm not including myself in that, they think that you guys are. Sneaking it out without telling them. Is it coming from kids? It's coming from everybody.
Kids, say, kids, adults, I mean.
No, it's not just kids. So are these people who are going to events and seeing, not seeing something, or?
I think they could see a janitor taking a floor scrubber in there and thinking it's a sander, and then tell their, you know, text their buddy, and next thing you know, by the time they get to the back of the class, you know, the sky is falling.
And it's kids seeing things that, the, the statue that was missing, the, you know, the carving, um. Both of my kids called me the day they went to school and it was not where it had been. Uh, I got calls before school started. You know, mom, they already took it. Um, and it, and it didn't take long to get back to the carver of the statue and. I got text messages and calls from his family about, you know, where did it go?
And to Admin's credit, I think you've announced many times that it's not disappeared, it's just been removed.
Well, at that point in time, it hadn't been announced yet, but yes, right after that, it, that went out, but.
When you have thirty people, you know, that only, only thirty people that watch the board meetings, that doesn't exactly get around, so.
And I think that's where a transparent memorialization project coupled with this whole thing would help that situation. Oh, yes, that does exist and that will go here, I think that's why it's unnecessary.
And keep in mind, too, I'm not making excuses, but I was bound to that motion as well as everything, and I'm not making sense within a year, so. We spent, we didn't remove a lot of that, a lot of it, again, easy free stuff until the, uh, when the teachers cleaned their rooms. Um, at the end of, of the school year in June or so, you know, a lot of that took things home that were there too. And we did that simply for the reason you said, we had kids who were saying, where is all this stuff going, it's, it's being removed and. My concern has been the student body from the very beginning, and, uh, so. I thought, we thought removing that in the summer would be much less traumatic for kids because they would be walking into new rooms and classrooms and not even knowing what was there before. So a lot of that stuff, again, if there were little signs or magnets or whatever. There was a sign in this room, in fact, it had the school rules on it, had the flaming arrow on it, so we put a new one, like, as we came back this fall, so.
Anyone else, any other comments or thoughts?
Not to prolong this, but I do need something to relieve us of having to redo the gym floor and those type of things, they have to be started soon. So I, I do need something from the board, if that's the motion, the way they want to move. To release us from doing it.
Okay, well, um, I agree with John, I believe, uh, we need to have an up or down vote relative to rescinding those two motions.
But wait, timeout, doesn't that though, Ken say about the maintenance on that motion?
I'm sorry, what are you asking me?
The motion that we, he just.
It does, but it says that we have to remove only the American imagery within one.
Unless.
That just says unless I was doing something with it before that, then I could go ahead and do it at that time.
Gotcha.
Like I said, if I have to do the gym floor, I have to do it this summer, which means I have to get people in now to get it scheduled and get a price, get the board to approve the price.
But we don't even have a replacement except for the block B.
And we don't even have that finalized.
We haven't even had that yet.
Yeah.
So I, I, they're problematic on a couple of different levels. Um, I also, um, again. Everyone on both sides wants us to have some resolution to all of this, uh, and, um. We're not gonna be resigned as a board until we have that book to know where this board stands. We're, we're just not tethered, given how problematic and forced it was to those actions undertaken by the last board. And. In order for us to know, and people are gonna be unhappy either way. Right? But to know where this board stands on this, we need to do that for ourselves. One way or the other. Because there's a lot we need to take on, there's a lot of other things we're gonna focus. So we gotta know where we stand relative to these resolutions.
So. So what's to say then that it gets rescinded and then the whole idea of going forward with the rebranding will then just be back further? Like before, because there are other priorities, right? So like, that's where, that's where I don't, like, the rescinding part. Without the, hey, this is what we're going to, doesn't quite make sense to me, because then that doesn't necessarily, I, I, I can see that being rescinding. And then it'll be. We're back to where we were and then perhaps there will be other priorities that kind of come up and we focus on and we. Talk about it anymore because there isn't. Unless I guess that, that, the, the rescinding of it has some action on moving forward, otherwise, I don't know. You know, I mean, like that, that's where I can see it being a, a, a difficult kind of. Move to, to take that step back to be able to move forward.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion, I mean, I know I'm gonna be outnumbered, um, probably, but that's mine.
Mine would be to, to remove the, the, the part that's got Ken's, um, that Ken's having a current real issue with. And that's the whole year part, so removing it and getting rid of the second piece of how to do with the year. That's what I would personally be the most comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
And not to belabor either, you're talking both motions, because the, the Red Raider one doesn't have this year, doesn't have, I mean, the Red Raider motion is different than. The one that was on April twenty seventh looks a little bit differently than the one that was on April thirteenth.
And that's, that's the decision, again, where there's, it's a binary choice. That people either want to keep it or people want to have it be what the motion, uh. That passed last April ones, and again, I think this board deserves the opportunity to be able to, uh. Determine which direction we're gonna go with it.
Does the Red Raider have, uh, Red Raider resolution, does that have a timeframe?
Just the point at which Tammy completed, she had the.
Not that, like, not that, like.
Not to the Red Raider, but there was part of that motion that said, within such a period of time, she had to be, bring these three recommendations to the board. So that was the time limit that was in that, but not specifically for the Red Raider.
Okay, so it could, it could go along with the process and take as long as it needed to be and evolve.
Uh, yes, if the board so chooses not to rescind it, yes. Yes.
That one.
Yes. Anything else?
I guess, can I just, I was, I was thinking about something, you said you view the red as binary, either you wanna keep it or you don't, to me, it, it depends. I don't know if that is necessarily as binary. Because it depends on what exactly a Red Raider is, so.
I think that comes out of the, I think that comes out of the branding committee process.
Correct, that's why I'm thinking that is not necessarily either, you know, keeping it or getting rid of it. To me, I would have to see, because tying it with skin color of a race, that, that's the, you know, non-starter. But if it was completely devoid of that, and there was a strong case for a different kind of Raider, not a Native American skin color, then that's different to me, I just wanted to mention that.
Anything else? But again, informative and productive. Forge ahead, because we need to forge ahead. Before we take a motion to adjourn, the community needs to know that we will be having an executive session after the conclusion of this work session to discuss matters of safety and health. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.